Good morning, the Committee of the Whole is now called to order. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session Google Drive folder labeled 12, 13, 22 Committee of the Whole. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email 36glcession@gmail.com. Just to go over the rules of engagement one more time, the amendments not in writing will be called out of order. There will be three rounds for discussion, we'll have two rounds of questions for the panel. Each Senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. Time to speak may not be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all of that member's time on that question and may not later speak even if all the time yielded was not used. After the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused. Third round is for amendments or comments. After we complete discussion of the bill, I will allow the sponsor to close and we'll entertain a motion for the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole followed by a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole at which time I will report out the bill as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. We are now on Bill number 332-36LS as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing and Act to add a new Article 13 to Chapter 77 of Title 12 Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing tax credits for the rehabilitation and improvements of the football fields operated by the Guam National Youth Football Federation. I now call upon the panel guests and for the Sergeant-at-Arms to swear them in and afterwards for their introduction.
Please rise and raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, do you all affirm that any and all information you provide today whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Mr. Chairman, under oath, you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you Sergeant-at-Arms. And now I call on our panelists to introduce themselves beginning with our OFB Director.
Stephen Guerl, Director of OFB.
Carlos Berdalio Gueda, Deputy Director.
Johnson Nicholas Gueda.
Thank you very much gentlemen. At this time I'll recognize the primary sponsor of the measure, Senator Moylan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the panel for coming this morning to review with us the Bill 332-36. This bill has of course been a long time coming and it basically mirrors a lot of other attempts we had and were successful with private-public partnership. This bill especially focusing on the years, over the years of rehabilitation needed for the football fields. Mr. Shiroma, of course I understand your history with your father Hal and we do appreciate, I wanted to acknowledge that, all the hard work that you put in and dedication, you and your family and many families that have followed the example of Mr. Shiroma, your father, that have did great for the island in the sports. And many people have become quite successful and I think I've got one here sitting to my left that has probably been coached by your dad and many other families on the island as well. So now we're coming together with your help to discuss this bill to help improve the fields through public-private partnerships and these amounts that I think are reasonable so our general fund isn't affected as much. So I want to thank you for this, for your opportunity here today and to help us further understand so we can move this measure forward. So I welcome you and I welcome to hear all that you have to share with us today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Senator Moylan. We will begin now with the first round beginning with the back row. Senator Tidaway, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning to you and good morning to the panel. Thank you so much for being here. There is no doubt that the Shiron of, is that Ivan? Sorry Ivan, if I can't see you, I don't be disrespectful, I've known you for a long time and I've known your family for quite some time and appreciate all the great work that you're doing in our community with our youth. And so don't think of retiring anytime soon unless you have someone to take your place so, and I hope you are training the next generation to keep it going. I know how important it is for our youth to have other alternatives than sitting at home and playing video games, you know? So as an athlete myself, I know the importance of getting out there and, you know, being able to be healthy and staying healthy and having that exercise that is needed and so there's no doubt that you should be commended and your family commended as well as those who also volunteer for this. So thank you so much, just wanted to put that for the record and also for the record, Ivan's son is my godson, so merry Christmas to you. The other thing, the concern I have of course, all of us, is that, you know, $3 million is quite substantial, you know? And we just gave $600,000 to the Tennis Federation and I don't even think the Basketball Association had that much money over $3 million. But this is quite substantial in a situation where our economy is down, prices have gone So I am concerned about this amount. I noticed there was amendment that may be forthcoming on striking out Eagles Field. So Ivan, can you tell me if Eagles Field is strucken out, would this also lower the $3 million that the Federation is requesting for, for the improvement in maintenance of these fields?
I'm not sure as far as the $3 million Senator, but I'm just saying any help, we would appreciate it.
So it wasn't your Federation that came up with the $3 million?
It was just, we just threw it up in the air and we figured that'd be the right amount for that field.
So the $3 million is just something just picked out of the sky? You have nothing at all to show us what the plans are for the Timooning, for the Tezen Field, for Hal's Angels Field, for Talafofa Field, nothing like that? Any plans?
Not at this point.
You know, usually when people come before us, you know, we just don't want to throw money at them unless they have a plan. And I think that if, before you avail yourself of any of these, would you have an issue with, there was an amendment in here that states that before the money is, or the tax credits are given, that a plan is in place first?
Basically what we're looking at at Eagles Field, if it was not going to be used for the hospital issue, just putting up lights, poles, and resurfacing that whole field which is way more than the $3 million.
Okay, well, no, I'm not talking about Eagles Field, I'm talking about the other ones because there's going to be an amendment here that I've seen that strikes out Eagles Field, I'm talking about the other areas. What are you going to be doing in Timooning's Field?
Resurfacing the turf, because right now it's like, basically everything we play there with a little bit rain, everything is torn up, it's like a, basically all muddy.
Okay, and what is the cost on that?
We haven't figured that out yet. We're not trying to go ahead, you know, making plans without any money involved, so we haven't discussed that yet.
What about Tezen Field?
Tezen Field needs, the whole field needs to be resurfaced and then we want to provide lights, power, underground power.
Underground power, okay, and do you know the cost of that?
We don't have a cost right now.
What about Hal's Angels Field, formerly Weddinggill Field? What are you going to be doing in that field?
We're trying to develop our practice field and then replace our existing lights from, to LEDs which is power savers. Right now what we have is metal highlight which consumes a lot of power.
Do you charge anybody to come to these games?
We never charge, not in youth football.
Okay, great. What about Talafofa Field?
Talafofa Field is, I think that one also needs to, the lights needs to be replaced. We have to work with the mayor because they ultimately give us the permission to do whatever, you know, we plan on doing.
Okay.
But yeah, we want to replace all our existing lights to LEDs which is to save power in the long run.
And what other, other than what I mentioned right now, Mr. Shiroma, what other places do, does the Federation utilize in practice fields?
We usually just use the same fields that we use for the games which is why everything is torn up right away for the games.
Okay, because in the, in the bill it says fields that are utilized as practice fields by the GNYFF teams. So you're saying that there are no other ones that you usually practice at Timooning, Tezen, Weddinggill, Talafofa?
There is, like for one of our organizations, they use the Parks and Recs Field in Wistic Road.
But that one is not?
It's not a football field, it's just a park.
Oh, okay, it's just a park, okay. So other than that, there's really not any other fields that are to practice, so, okay. So my next, thank you, Mr. Shiroma. Mr. Berdalio from Gueda, what's the liability that the government of Guam has currently for these tax credits right now for FY22 and going into FY, well, let's just go into FY23, sorry, not FY22, but FY23? What is the tax liability currently?
Senator, in total, we have $29.7 million approved.
I'm sorry, say again, Mr. Berdalio?
Tax credits?
Yes, what is, what is the liability for the government of Guam?
So available through, we paid out 18.5 of the 29.7, available through FY22 is 7.9 and through FY23 is 1.2.
So the liability for the government of Guam, in other words, those tax credits that are floating out there for all different projects in FY23?
It's 1.2, yeah. 1.2 for FY23.
Yeah.
Through, available through FY22 is 7.9, 8 million.
Right. What is the 29.7 million?
That's the 14 different tax credit programs that are currently authorized by law.
Okay, so that's the number I'm looking for?
Yeah.
So there are 14 programs?
Right.
And the total of that in tax credits is 29.7 thousand, correct?
29.7 million.
Oh, 7 million, sorry, thank you for that correction. Yeah, make it clear, it's not thousand but million, yes sir. Oh, my time is up, okay, well, thank you so much, I'll wait till the second round.
Thank you Senator Tidaway. Senator Blas.
No questions at this time, I just want to thank the panel for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you Senator Blas. Senator Chalahi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to bring up, because yesterday I bring up the, the different governor Guam departments, for example, the gym within the villages, the mayor's office, and they're not giving credit for the usage of lighting. Do you guys get money for the usage of lighting in, for the field? Do you get credit for that?
No, we don't. GNYFF doesn't get money for that.
So the 3 million that we're talking about accommodates the lighting usage and whatever GPA charges?
No, it's strictly for improving the fields. As far as using the field where they have lights like Talafofa Field, we usually make a donation to the mayor to offset the costs.
But do you have an account of the, the money involved in paying for GPA for the lightings? Do you have an estimate of that, how much you pay for the power?
Only for my field which is privately owned, the Angels Field.
So you don't pay, GPA does not give you credit for the usage of the lighting?
No, no they don't.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the panel for being with us this morning, sharing your insight. Thank you very much.
Thank you Senator Chalahi. Senator Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the panel, thank you for being here. Mr. Shiroma, thank you to your family for everything that you've done to promote football for our youth. And, Mr. Chair, as you know, many organizations has come before this body to ask for, for tax credits or private partner, private-public partnerships in order to improve the fields that we have in different organizations and different sports. My daughter being a rugby player for many years was able to avail herself of the fields that they played on and also excel in collegiate rugby. She played D1 rugby for Dartmouth and graduated from there and it's, it just goes to show what we need to do to improve the sports facilities for our youth. Be it tennis, football, rugby, whatever, we, we need to do what we can for our youth. And I think that when you look at the fields and we talked about lighting, a lot of it was lighting, but I think a lot of it also has to do with the condition of the fields and how they play and what they play on. So just last night I was up at Naval Hospital at Guam High watching the semifinals for rugby. And the field that they play on is astroturf compared to what our children play on in the different fields throughout our island. When a child runs and gets tackled or slides on the field, it's a field that they know that they're not going to have a piece of glass come up or rocks come up and injure them because the field is maintained or it's the astroturf field that is great for playing on. And I think that's what we need to, we need to look at in the bigger picture. I understand $3 million is a lot of money, but keeping our children conditioned, keeping our children out there and healthy and going to play sports, I think it's worth every penny of investment that we do because that's what we do for our children and it's for the future of our island. And I thank, and I thank all of you up here, and Gueda, thank you for being up here so that we can find out where we can get this, or how to get this private-public partnership going with Mr. Shiro and the Guam Football Federation and hopefully other organizations will come forward to, to do the same. Because if government can't do it, we need the public-private partnership to get it, get it done. And we know that that's the route that we need to take. You know, it's so, it's, it's fortunate because my daughter, her head coach at, in college, is out here today. She's here today for this whole week scouting and recruiting for players. And that's what we want, is not our children to go off-island, to go and go to these different clinics or camps, but for the recruiters and the coaches to come to Guam and watch them play on their own turf, watch them play with each other and see how they can get so that they'll be able to recruit more players from our island, get them to play out there. Because last night, you know, I was talking to this one, one, one high schooler and that was her dream, is just to go off and play. But that she wants to get a good education and come back to our island and give back to our island. So yes, we have a lot of, you know, we, government has a lot of obligations, but I think the greatest obligation is to our children and to the future. And if we can do it through public-private partnerships and allowing these, these organizations to beef up our fields, to improve our fields, to, when, when children play sports, you know, that they're not going to get hurt. And I, I seen the field, I seen the field at Weddinggill, I seen the field in Talafofa, I seen the field in Timooning, and all the different fields that, you know, when, when you see them playing and you see this, this puff of smoke come up, that's dirt, they're moving rocks, you know? But when they were playing up in, up at Naval Hospital, yeah, you didn't see any of that because of the condition of the field, the type of field that they're playing on, you know, just like the Soccer Federation. So, you know, I asked my colleagues, you know, let's do what we can to continue to embrace public-private partnerships and getting organizations to come forward to put, put their, their hat out there and say, hey, you know what, we want to do, we want to do better for our children and our future in, in sports as well. But thank you guys for coming out here. Mr. Shiroma, I know that, you know, you've been doing this for many years and I hope that this body will, will pass this legislation and you'll be able to get your, your public, your private organizations to come out and start improving the fields so that when they, when they come up, they'll be able to say, yeah, look at our children playing on these fields, they're safe, they can see at night. You know, I was up in Timooning a couple of months ago and the sun started to go down and what did the parents do? They all turned on the headlights in the car just so that the kids continue to play, to practice. And it's, it's embarrassing that you have people that come from the mainland to see our kids practice and what do the parents do? They're turning on the headlights in the cars just so they can see. So let's get away from the, you know, the, this and let's start improving our fields so that we can accomplish three things, yeah? Our children stay healthy, they can enjoy sports, and they can get recruited so that they can go off-island and, and play what they want to do and then come back and give back to the island. But thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Senator Ada. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and certainly welcome to our panel. I do want to ask, Mr. Shiroma, does your Football Federation have any formal agreements with Department of Parks and Recreation? I'm assuming are these all government properties, these fields that are listed here in the bill?
No, we don't. Every, it's like a year-to-year thing where we go and sit down with the mayor and talk to them, let them know our season starts at a certain time, but they won't, nobody would give us any long-term agreement.
So do you know if so, I mean, we can check, but some of these may be under the mayor's jurisdiction versus Parks and Recreation?
Yeah, most of them are under the mayor's.
Okay, but do you have anything formal in writing with them or you just meet with them annually as you mentioned and?
We meet with them annually.
Okay, and let them know what your plans are?
Yes.
And aside from your organization, is any of the other, be it the mayor's office or any Parks and Rec or any government organization doing anything to assist or be involved in any of the maintenance of these fields? Do they mow the fields? Are there any other caretaking involved?
No, it's all up to us. We cut the grass, like if we want to use GW field, we go and, you know, we pave him a little bit on the side, make some kind of donation, and then we cut the grass, stuff like that, but nothing, nothing formal.
It might be good, I mean, you're going to make this investment, you know, just so there's some formal agreement, you know, you don't want to make the investment, they come back and say you can't use the field or something. I'm just, I'm just thinking it might be a good idea and certainly when we talk with the mayors, that'll be something I would, I would inquire of them to, just to formalize it so that, you know, your use and access is there if you're going to put all this additional effort to upgrade, upgrade the field. So I think that's a plus all around, but it would be good to have something formalized so you have something to refer to other than so-and-so said this and, or a new mayor comes in and it's a different story. I'm sure collectively, the, you know, the village mayors also want to facilitate activity among, among the children in the village, but it's good if we're looking at this kind of money to have some formal agreement. As Senator Chalahi had inquired, she inquired and maybe, you know, they may, we may look at this on round three as an amendment to the bill, that the Football Federation provide some plans so that before any money's released, we know what it is and maybe that allows you the time to go do an assessment on each of the different fields and see with this amount what you can prioritize and cover so that there's a public accountability?
Right.
You know, of what you're going to prioritize and say we're going to spend X amount on this field or X amount on, you know, this other field?
Mm-hmm.
And then have some plans in place so that as the funds are coming in, you have, you have something to account for and you know what you're prioritizing. And then again, we have importantly, like I said, the public accounting of how the money's being spent. Would you be okay with that?
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Okay, and then for Gueda, if I could ask, is that something you can help? I know you're going to be administering the process and you've done this before, but is that something you can, that would be of value to you is having a set plan so that you know how the, what the intended priorities are of how these funds are going to be spent? Mr. Berdalio?
With respect to Gueda, I guess our role would just to review the documentation, ensure that it's in compliance with the requirements by the law, but yes, having a copy of the plan would assist us in verifying, May John?
Well, in that way you know what's being spent where and you can follow through to make sure that there's some order.
Exactly, Senator.
Because, I mean, I understand, you know, that it's a football association, they're not a government entity.
Yes.
But we're talking about public funds at the end of the day and I think we all want to recognize that, you know, there's a need to address obviously the maintenance, not just of the football fields, but as I mentioned during the public hearing, you know, every time I drive by, and I used to go to the Gania Pool with frequency and I look at that pool now going on four years, and there are many other of our public facilities, sports facilities obviously, that a lot of time and effort are not being invested, you know, to maintain them so that we have alternate, you know, places to go for activity that's safe and, and healthy for our people because I'm sure the more active we are, you know, the better we are health-wise. And I just want to make sure because I'm sure we'll look at in the next term perhaps how we can better administer these tax credits because as we know, when we, when we vote for legislation that gives tax credits, this is money that we're not going to get through the general fund to address other critical priorities, be it our educational system and the school facilities that need to be addressed or our hospital and other critical services, particularly these days with regards to crime that our people are experiencing, that money's not going to be available for that. So nevertheless, I mean, it's an important cause, I mean, I have a child that I'm very hopeful will want to be active in sports and we want to have them to have a very good, productive, healthy activities in the community and things that they can enjoy and also have a safe, as Senator Ada mentioned, you know, to make sure that these are, you know, a safe environment, but more importantly because we would be agreeing to take out $3 million out of the general fund for other more critical, and there are, let's not kid, there are other more critical needs in the government. You know, we just want to make sure that the money and the program is, you know, is being properly administered and so I'm sure your long-term commitment with your family, I mean, I'm not a football player myself, but you know, your family has been known for many, 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 many years since your dad of investing time and effort, energy, love into this sport to keep it active on Guam, so I certainly appreciate, I'm sure the people of Guam appreciate the contribution that he made and you are continuing on, you know, continuing on his legacy. And so I think we can have a win-win situation if we have a proposal for a plan to be provided and then that way we know the parameters of the, how the money's going to be spent and have an accounting for that. So with that, I think we'd have some comfort. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Senator Brown. Senator Duñez?
Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank the representatives of Gueda for being here as well as our OFB and most especially to Ivan and your family and really, I think today and I speaking, I'm speaking from experience, that when you look at the Guam Youth Football League, it is one big family. Of course, Hal's Angels and their organization and the history is so deep and rich. There are mult, a multitude of individuals throughout the entire island and this system that have contributed for decades to make Guam youth football available. I think it's important, Mr. Chairman, that we understand the background because we have extended tax credits, we have just done it for the Guam Tennis Federation, and you have an example there where you had to build it and they will come. They built it, they came back to try to make sure they could maintain it going forward and I think it's a great bill. For decades, the Guam Youth Football Organization has built and invested and has gotten these fields into the condition they are through many sponsorships and organizations, but I think there's one other thing that I'd like to point out and I want to see if I can get concurrence from Ivan. To play football is a little different than most sports. I'm so glad rugby came along and took, cut fire on Guam and our kids like to play soccer and other things because truthfully, you buy a pair of cleats, you throw on a t-shirt, a pair of shorts, get out there and you play. But I can tell you firsthand as being a coach in the Guam Youth Football But I can tell you firsthand as being a coach in the Guam Youth Football Football League and have brothers and family and working with the organization, they sell lunch plates, they wash cars, they do everything because most kids cannot afford the kind of equipment that's expensive to play football. Helmet, shoulder pads, thigh pads, hip pads, mouthpieces, cleats. It is jerseys, it's very expensive to play football, but our community loves the sport and our kids thrive in it. So, Ivan, I just wanted you to be able to just share that part of the story, not only the investment that families and people get together and even with small lawn mowers and whatever else and make it possible as much as possible to play, but just the expense that the organization and the families go through just to suit their kids up and try to put them on the field.
Well, there's no question, football is the most expensive sport to be involved in as far as maintaining the fields and like you said, the equipment, the uniforms, plus there's 22 kids on the field at all times, paying for referees, paying to line the field, paying to cut the field and then dealing, on top of all of that, dealing with the vandalism that goes on constantly. Just this weekend, they tore open the roof of my storage again at House Angels Field. So, you know, it's just a constant looking for money to fix all these things, but yes, it's very expensive and all these coaches, there's 160 coaches every year that come out and our volunteers, none of them are being paid, which is why there's always a high turnover because, you know, everybody likes to get paid, but same with our board. They all want to have a little piece of the pie, right, but I keep saying, no, all the money has to go into maintaining this league. So, there is a high turnover of board members, coaches, but they're still, because I keep it that way, everything has to be volunteer. So, that's how we operate the GNYFF to this day and that is why we're here asking for the tax credit but not going out asking for cash straight out. Because we grew up in the Tumuning Eagles where we're always working off any donation from the Jones family, from the Skro family, from the Addas. We never ask straight out, we always worked it off. So, that is the same mindset that I want to share with the senators here, that's how I try to operate this league to this day.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important, and that's why I had to ask the question that we did, that, you know, we can enumerate and I don't have any problems with my colleagues talking about having a plan. I think they're going to have no problem putting up a plan because the infrastructure is there. The fields are there, they're battered, they're worn, they're storm-ridden, the lights that haven't been replaced for years and years and years like my colleague Senator Adda said, they do the best they can. All their games, I believe, right now are being played in the day for sure on these fields during the really hot part of the day to play on Guam and these guys got multiple layers of leagues from all the way from these little, little, two-foot-high kids to the big boys before they go to high school. Sometimes the games start at 8:00 in the morning and they're not done until 4:00 in the afternoon. I feel sorry for the kids that play during lunchtime and everything, I mean, with the top of the sun, but they love the sport. And I just wanted to make sure that we understood, there is a ton of sweat equity, fundraisers, lunch plates, car roches, everything and personal resources that go into this. So, I pray that the government would see that and match it. Going forward though, I do understand the concerns. So, I wanted to go to Carlos real quick. Carlos, in your review of the five-year period, the $3 million cap, I believe there's no more than $600,000 per field and, you know, you not only serve now as a deputy of GITA but you've been in your prior terms, you know, a lifetime employee or a lifetime government finance individual at BBMR and the like. Do you look at this plan as being very manageable and having minimum effect on general fund
In terms of having an effect on the general fund, it is a tax credit, so to avail yourself of the credit, you would be paying a tax liability, so I don't think there's any effect to the general fund in terms of, because you'd have to apply for the tax credit. And, yeah, I see it as not having any effect in the five-year window, I don't, I'm not sure because I don't know what the plans are. I don't know if that's enough time to effectuate a full implementation for each of the fields, but I see you have provision here to extend should it be required. One thing that was brought up, I discussed it with Mel on the way over here, was she was concerned with the waiving of the fee, I believe it's still in here, in terms of, and maybe Mr. Sharoma, Ivan can answer, what is that fee used for? Is it for maintenance or? So, did you notice that provision in the bill that waives the fee for anybody, for any entity that contributes to the field? So, that particular field would waive the entrance fee and I don't know what, if that's in line with your operational costs? I don't know what your entrance fees are used for, maintenance, for lights, for?
Any monies coming in is strictly for improvement, has nothing to do with the entrance fee or any of that. We just, entrance fee has, nobody in the United States charged on youth football.
Okay.
To watch any youth football games, so we just follow that same mindset again.
Okay. I just noticed there was a provision in here to waive that entrance fee and I didn't know if that was something that you worked into your operational budget going forward?
Yeah.
For maintenance or? No?
No.
Okay.
That's totally separate.
Mr. Chairman, I know we have another round, I have a few other discussion points, but I just cannot overemphasize the fact that there's no question about the expenditure, just lighting alone and power and the conditioning of the field. There's, this $3 million over five years is going to have to be matched with significant resources from sponsors and others over the five fields that are identified here and I just think that in order to entice those investments from private businesses to donate and to also come to the table, I think the government of Guam would do well by providing this opportunity to show that it is a public-private partnership and that their investment will be matched, you know, to really bring the proper conditioning of these fields. So, I'll continue to listen and contribute on the second round. Sí, just más, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Speaker Talahe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. So, the bill says that this, these provisions are applicable to fields operated by the Guam National Youth Football Federation and shall include those under the jurisdiction of the municipal councils of the villages and then it lists, or the Department of Parks and Recs and/or under the jurisdiction of nonprofit organizations. And so, of the fields listed, I'm just wondering if you could tell us, whose jurisdiction are these fields currently? You see the list of fields?
The mayor's.
All of them?
Except for House Angels Field.
House Angels Field, okay. Wedingale, whose jurisdiction is that?
That's under my private.
And that was by a public law that was passed, correct?
Yes.
All right. And so, and Elise, is that also with Elise through Chamarantras?
Yes.
Okay.
Same with the rugby.
All right. And so, so these Tumuning, Tizen, Eagles Field, Talafufo are currently under the mayor's jurisdiction and, but they're going to be, it's GNYFF that is going to, I don't know, be instrumental in the tax credits. It says in fields operated by, does GITA, have you found that that is a recognized operated by, that you're going to be able to confirm? GITA can answer. That the terms, it says fields operated by GNYFF, those are the ones that can get tax credits. He's mentioned that the, most of these fields are under the jurisdiction of the mayors except for the House Angels. So, have you found that these fields, although under the jurisdiction of the mayors, are
No, and there was no requirement in the bill that GITA researches that and certifies that they are infected of the purview of the GNYFF.
All right. Well, on page three, line 21, it says GITA is going to approve the cost of design, labor, materials for the rehab and improvement of football fields operated by the GNYFF. So, I just want to make sure we're going to reach their goal to cover all these fields and not, and not only just one field. And then on page five, line nine, it talks about, GITA again is going to identify and approve the businesses that contribute to rehab and improvement of football fields operated by the GNYFF. And then there was another provision that, page seven, line 10 and on, that say, the Department of Parks and Rec, the respective mayor, or the nonprofit group which has jurisdiction over the respective football field shall have regulatory and advisory oversight of the improvements, right? And that, of the fields operated by GNYFF. So, then it links them back to kind of, you know, getting the regulatory and advisory oversight of the mayors or DPR. And, but if you look, sorry, if you look back the paragraph right before that, it says GITA in coordination with GNYFF shall be responsible for approving the contributions on football fields operated by GNYFF. And this works for me except that I know the mayors, right? And I want to make sure that they are aware of this, they are able to work with this language where this, these facilities are still under their jurisdiction. This bill doesn't remove that jurisdiction, but we're acknowledging that they're operated by and I want to, I just wanted to know if the mayors also acknowledge that, right? So that they were going to be, this will reach these fields. And then my final issue, and I'm running out of time, but in the amended bill amended by the committee, 771-310 was removed. And to me, that was a very instrumental part because it talks about who's going to submit the plans, where are they going to submit it to? It was GITA and that GITA is going to approve these before any tax credit is issued, right? So, in other words, you're going to get advance notice of what they plan to do and then you approve it and then they know they're going to get credit for that improvement as opposed to them coming back later and saying, oh, we did this, 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 maybe five things that, you know, maybe there wasn't an agreement about.
Senator, in, with this bill and with all other tax credit programs, GITA's involvement is to review the documents that are submitted as from the entity that's running point, which here would be, well, we were suggesting that it be the Guam National.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Yeah.
No.
Yeah, thank you.
With this and with other tax credit programs, GITA reviews the documentation that's being submitted as requesting for the tax credit memorandums. The, with the section that you're referring to, we had suggested that it be identified as, that an entity be identified in this race, we're assuming it would be the GNYFF to run point regarding this tax credit program as there's, as you mentioned with regarding the different fields and regarding the different entities that have jurisdiction over these fields, there's just too many hands in the cookie jar.
Hands in the cookie jar?
Well, you have the mayors that have jurisdiction over the fields, you have Parks and Rec and you have nonprofit organizations which are unlisted, so we don't know who those entities are.
Right. That's exactly my concern is that we are acknowledging that the municipalities have jurisdiction over the fields, we may be acknowledging that GNYFF is operating on the fields and, but they're supposed to, according to the previous language, you know, have different roles, regulatory and advisory to GITA as to what we want on the fields, right? And I'm just bringing this up because I remember we were talking about football, soccer fields before, right, in Talafufo and the mayor said, there's another field he wants to use for multipurposes and so I don't want to see after the bill's passed that we have a disagreement with the mayors. I want to make sure that, I like the roles that have been laid out in here for each of them. I think we should put back the 771-310 so that GITA receives all the documents, GITA approves tax credits, can't be any other entity that's approving tax credits except for GITA and that if there's a role of each, different parties that GITA assures that each of them, you know, is consistent, is in agreement with the plans.
Senator, I think in my administrator's original testimony, she pointed out that historically GITA's role in the tax credit programs has been to minister and review the approval of the respective supporting documents. Now, in terms of approving, are you saying that we're going to prove the actual plans and designs for the facility? Because that's a role that we don't, we don't have any part of.
So, I know they removed this section and it, but GITA's still required by other provisions of the bill to do that. And the issue to me is, so GNYFF, they may say, this is the plan, this is what we want to do, but what about the mayors who have jurisdiction? So, what is their role? Thank you.
Speaker, last question, time is expected.
In terms of, are you saying that we will review the plans as submitted by the mayors in coordination with Parks and Rec? Because that's, that's what our administrator was trying to address in her original testimony was that that part we don't, we don't have a hand in.
I.
And I was talking to Mr. Sharoma and he felt it was more appropriate that GNYFF should handle that.
Yes, I agree. They should definitely have a role because it's the football field and they want it to be designed the way they want.
Right.
However, these fields are under the jurisdictions of the mayors and the mayors might also have an opinion and I want them to be able to come to an agreement on it and that I feel like GITA has a good, important role in making sure they come to an agreement, no disputes, in other words.
Senator, any plans that we do approve the GNYFF, we're always going to have the mayors involved. We're not just going to make any plans and then go straight to GITA. We want to make sure everybody's involved, the transparency is going to be there, the checks and balances, so that's, you know, we're all for all these things, but the mayor definitely has to be involved because most of these fields belong to the mayor, short of House Angels Field.
Thank you, yeah. So, the bill does say regulatory and advisory by the mayors, but this last provision I think ensures that.
Speaker's time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question for OFB, Mr. Guerrero. If you can, on your statement to us for the committee report, you provided some information on the review of the bill with the total amounts and how much will be spent annually. There were some concerns that this could be a substantial amount affecting our general fund. Can you just highlight for us what you see annually, again, the total amount that could possibly be spent and the percentage that that will affect on our general fund?
Senator, if I understand the bill correctly, the way it's presented, is that this is a. a total of $5 million to be to be utilized, be given tax credit to any businesses that want to contribute or invest into the development and maintenance of these fields. I believe for the first two years, there's a maximum of $3 million that can be spent. It is also governed by a maximum of $600,000 per, per, I believe, per business that want to invest. The remaining $2 million will be will be over the remaining three year of of the program. If you ask me what the the impact would be, I would, I would assume if if everything was maximized, for example, for the first two years, then the total impact it would have on the general fund is $3 million, because that is the cap. If that, if that does actually materialize, and that basically is saying that, you know, the Guam would be giving tax credits to these businesses in the amount of $3 million for the first two years, that again could be the impact it would have on the general fund. So forth on the remaining three years, you have a maximum of $2 million for the next three years. So of course, the impact with that, if maximized to the full extent of the $2 million, would be $2 million for the remaining three years.
Thank you. And then continuing with that, of course, this is dependent upon the organization and Mr. Soroma's ability to solicit these businesses that want to maximize the amount of contributions they can give, which will be nice, but the possibility, of course, Mr. Soroma, I wish him the best, that that could actually happen, that you max that out, amount out for the first year, that's wonderful, right? But so let's say it does. So if we're just looking at an annual budget, which we go, the legislature goes through every year, that maximum amount, if the success on the solicitation does happen, is how much again?
Like you said, if the scenario is that if we maximize it safely all in the first year, that would be a $3 million impact to the general fund for that for that first year.
Okay. The percentage of that, against, let's use our figure for this budget, general fund, what is, our general fund budget that we we've had, what is that amount? And give me a percentage of how much that would be affected by.
Senator, I believe the BBT is estimated somewhere like $365 million, estimated revenues for FY '23. So if you're looking at, say, a million dollars, that'd be less than 1%.
One more time, I didn't hear that clearly. Your percentage of the overall effect, if this bill was to pass, and Mr. Soroma's was very successful, the impact on the general fund, one more time, the percentage that you project?
Okay, let me just quickly pull this out here, Senator, if you give me a moment. Okay, what we're estimating for FY '23, for example, on the on the BBT, is we're looking at a total of about $302 million estimated for the BBT. So if you're, if if they were to maximize, say, a million dollars in the first year, I think that would be less than 1% the impact would have on the BBT.
Okay, and your measurements as OFP, is that substantial?
Yeah. You know, a million dollars is a million dollars, and a million dollars can go a long way to even a smaller agency. So to answer your question, any amount that affects the general fund does basically affect operation of the government.
Very, very good answer, Mr. Guerrero. But again, it's 1% that we're looking at if Mr. Soroma and his team go out there successfully to get that right away. So we do hope for the best on that. But thank you, Mr. Guerrero. Mr. Soroma, can can you also expand on your relationship with the mayors? I think you brought up a very good point. We're concerned that they are part of this discussion with the organization. Throughout the years, you've had many conversations with some of the same mayors and some different mayors, but how much are they involved with you and your organization and the kids in these, in their areas with these fields? And how, how, how does your communication go, you know, with with them and understanding of these possibilities of what we're about to decide on today?
Throughout the years, I can honestly say all the mayors have been very supportive of any youth football sports or any sport. But they have been supportive with the football league, although they are concerned with us tearing up the field, right, because of the cleats. Other than that, they've never denied us. So we've gone back every year, and we've never been denied. So I don't think they're going to complain if we have any improvements we want to make on the fields, because that's going to help the baseball team, the soccer, you know, because during our offseason, everybody's going to benefit from any improvements that we do make on the fields. So I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Can you expand upon that further? Different sports, different activities that happens on that field that you know of, please?
Okay, like the morning field, that's a baseball field we're playing on. We use the outfield, and we measure our 100-yard, you know, our football dimensions on the outfield. So when we're done with our season, the baseball team uses the same field, there's soccer people that practice side by side with the football. And then Tijen Field, everybody uses Tijen Field with Mayor Blas. She's one of the biggest supporters of youth football or any sport. So she lets rugby use it, soccer, you know, so everybody tears up that field. So we're trying to, any money that we do get from this tax credit, we want to build a practice field for the two organizations that use that area, the Raiders and the Crusaders, so they don't keep tearing up that field, because throughout the year, everybody's using that same field. So basically, everybody benefits from any improvement that we make, not only football.
Thank you, Mr. Soroma. Mr. Guerrero, OFP, if any additional you'd list to add, please?
You know, I just want to share the sentiments of Mr. Soroma, and he's absolutely right. I run the Little League program in Guam, I've been running it for years. And one of the biggest problems we have is substandard fields for our kids to play on. And one of the things that are most concerned to me is that, you know, we put a lot of effort every year to prep these fields for baseball. And again, there's the shoulders of facilities, and when you have all the other sports coming in, soccer, rugby, utilizing a baseball field for practice, I'm telling you, by the end of the day, that baseball field is no longer viable for a baseball game. But I understand the need for for practice fields for all these other sports, but I can relate exactly what Mr. Soroma is is saying, and that, you know, a baseball field should be for baseball only. A rugby field, football field should be only for that particular sport. So I just wanted to share that with you, because I I go through the same thing every year. And and until we get to the point where, you know, we can basically provide the facilities to to move and prosper our sports for our youth, and it starts with the youth, we're really never going to get anywhere. And I and I applaud Mr. Soroma's efforts to taking this avenue of trying to develop these fields, or at least the baseball, I mean, football fields, and 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 doing it on their own. Because for years, unlike in the past, I mean, the '70s and '80s, the government was very much involved in providing appropriations to fund local sports on on island. But through the years, it kind of gradually stopped. And actually, to date, I don't, I don't think there's ever been an appropriation by by the government to fund any sports over the last 10, 15 years. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you for the insight, this is really good information. Mr. Soroma, hopefully, our, my colleagues here will agree, and we move this bill forward, and we get get it accomplished for you. You have a big task at your hand, your, or association will have a big task on your hands. How do you, how do you attempt, or what is your, going to be your approach out there to solicit then, to to gain interest, to support the PPP that these businesses will have approved? I'm sure you, we can all have grand plans, we want to air, build toilets out there, air-conditioned toilets, have a shade, big fans, and maybe a big blower, or anything's possible, right? But of course, you have some intent. Of course, you have some ideas that you would like to start with. Give us, give us what you foresee that you must do in order, once this gets passed. What's your move next? You know, some of us are thinking you should already have some plans in mind. But I'm, but I'm thinking you're going to go up to a business, and you're going to say, hey, can you work us, work with us? Where can you help us? Where can you start with? One business may say A, or one business can say I can do B. And then you're going to have to somehow put all this together and convince the mayors and convince GIDEA and work with your association to put this. So it's really going to be upon you and your organization. So please share with us, what will your move be once we get this passed?
First of all, let them know how many kids are involved with the youth football league, which is 1,000 kids every year for five to six months, that they're involved with football, youth football, that their time is being occupied at games, practices, whatever, weekends. So when we look at all the newspaper, the headlines, the graffiti that's going on, the trash, I, like all of you, are sick of all of these things. I'm doing my small part to get these kids to join a structured environment like football, which keeps them busy and tired, hopefully tired, so they don't go out and commit all these unnecessary graffiti and crimes and what have you. So that's my small part, and we're all, like I said, volunteers, nobody gets paid. So if you want to support the youth football and the things that we do as volunteers, then please donate. But that's, that's our passion, that's what we do. And I applaud all the other, Mr. Baseball Man over there, rugby, all of them. I know how hard it is, because that takes a lot of time, and we spend a lot of money on our own, from our own pockets, because this is what we love to do. And I'm only continuing the legacy of my dad, and that's all it is. So please help us keep these kids busy.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Soroma. I appreciate your, your, I hear your heart talking, so thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Senator Titerwee.
This is our second round, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I apologize to clarify, we've completed round one, we are now moving to the second round.
I believe Senator Perez hadn't had a chance for her round one, if she wanted to go, it's okay? Okay, so--
Senator Titerwee.
Thank you for recognizing, Mr. Chair, and again, thank you so much. And of course, Ivan, I've known you forever, and and I know you're very passionate about the sport. What this body needs to do is to make sure that whatever we pass here, we do it the right way. We make sure that no toes are being stepped on, whether it's baseball or any other kind of sport, you know, field hockey, whatever. We just want to make sure it's done correctly. And if you are going to use your name and and go after businesses to ask them, you know, that their tax credit be given to you, then it's got to be done the right way, because anybody can come in and change that field after you made all that investment, because you don't run the field, it's run by the mayors. And when you don't even have an MOU in place, that's an even bigger issue. So unlike the other areas, Tennis Federation, as well as Soccer Federation, or that kind of football, they oversee these areas, and it's something that we really need to invest in for our community, into sports, to give you a field that you actually run, that you oversee, that any improvements that are being made are made to stay that way and not be altered into a diamond, you know, or dugouts for baseball players, you know? And then the same for baseball, too. I'm not dogging on them, I'm just saying that let's do it, this the right way. I'm, you know, the original bill that was brought, and and Mr. Padalia, you were there at the public hearing, I believe? And you were testifying on the original bill, right?
It was my administrator, Mel, Mel was at the--
Yeah, you weren't there? I guess it was another one.
John.
Oh, John--
John was--
John, were you there, that one?
Yes.
Okay, and you were testifying, testifying on the original bill. Have you had the opportunity to see the amended version?
Yeah, we're just looking at it this morning.
The amended version. Okay, if you, if you have both of them side by side, you'll notice that the original bill had section 771-310, which means, which is Submittal of Rehabilitation and Improvement Plans for Each Football Field Operated by the Guam Youth Football Field. This actually talks about a plan that needs to be submitted first to GIDEA before anything has been approved. It, it, you know, it doesn't get you too involved in GIDEA, other than what your responsibilities are, but it does require to at least look at these projects or improvement plans for the field being submitted to you. Would GIDEA consider the word on operated, this is in the old, the original bill, operated by the Guam Youth Ball, Youth Football Field, instead of operated, can it be used by the Guam Youth Football Field? Because it's obvious they don't operate the field, it's, it's run by the mayor's council. And with this paragraph here, because I'm thinking about just, you know, making amendment, instead of just real simple putting a plan in place, to reinstate section 771-310.
In regards to the plan, the, the plans for the rehab and improvement, Senator, we would prefer to defer it to the experts and let them, it's their, they're the experts in running the, you know, the program. And our, our role is just to ensure that, that there is a plan, a plan was approved--
Right.
--and that we review the documentation that's submitted in regards to the payments for the tax credits. But as far as for the approving the plans, we would defer to the experts.
But but you're, you're at least receiving these improvement plans before you move forward, because it says here that the article, as well as the initiative of any rehabilitation or improvement projects identified in this article, rehabilitation improvement plan for each field shall be submitted to GIDEA, to GIDEA for approval. Well, just, I, if you take out the approval, at least it's just submitted to GIDEA. At least you have that before you move forward. Is that okay? I mean, you guys approve all the other kind of--
Yes, I think we can, we can, we can, we can surely look at the plan, at the approved plans, to ensure that--
That's right, there's no objection to receiving the plan once it's been approved by the GNYFF.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good, that's good to know. So we're okay on the--
But, but having us be the authority to approve the plan, that's where--
Right, right, just at least it's been submitted by an approved plan by the Federation and given to GIDEA.
Right.
Okay, I see that. And so that's section A. Section B, can you look at over that? See if that's okay? The old bill, the original one. Do you have an issue with section B, C, D, or E?
Section E refers to modification of the approved plan by GIDEA. I don't see the-- It's not in the amended, but we--
Right, the whole section is not in there, in the amended version, so I would like you to look that over.
So again, as far as reviewing, looking at the approved plan, you don't think we're going to have a problem with that, but it's just in being involved in the creation for legislation and approving of the plans.
Yeah, I don't see anything about you being involved or creating in that section, so--
We'll be fine, we'll be okay.
Okay, then, so, and you're okay with C, D, and E? Just to verify before, you know, I write another amendment. Just to verify before, you know, I write another amendment.
Could you just repeat that question again? You're asking if they were okay with which sections?
Well, everything from on 771310 from the original bill. You already said that A and B is okay. I just want to verify if C, D, and E in that same section is still okay with GITA.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the original bill now, and again, there's a reference to GITA approving the rehabilitation or whatever plan that would come up in the tax credit program. Again...
That's Section D, Carlos?
That's Section D, correct.
Okay, so we need to adjust this section, right? Okay, just to...
Perhaps you could read, "Once approved by the GNYFF."
And then go straight into, "GITA shall be reflective on the approval plan." Okay, thank you. So D is a concern, and then just to adjust the verbiage, and then A, just to ensure the verbiage is correct and that GITA has no authorization to approve. Approve the plans as, but just to...
Right.
Acknowledge that the plans have been approved by Guam Federation Football, Youth Football Field. Okay, got it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, no question, just a comment that, you know, I know that through experience you are in youth football, you know, especially, you know, Mr. Shoroma over there. I remember back in the days when your mom would look for Senator Cabo and I just to get some money so that he can improve the House Angels Field and all the plans that were necessary to be able to do this. So with regard to, I guess, the infrastructure and the planning and stuff, I can attest that, you know, just seeing how House Angels Field has gone from a field of rocks and stones and everything to now, you know, a football field that I was proud to play on, okay? That, you know, with regard to the assessment that's necessary and everything, I'm very confident that the organization, you and the organization, have that ability to do that, which is why I agree with GITA that, you know, I mean, instead of them approving the plans, you're the ones that are going to have to, you know, work on it, for lack of a better term. And you've had a lot of experience in rebuilding many fields, okay? I know you had a hand in, you know, in trying to get the Tezen Field, you know, up to par, as well as Eagles Field up to par, you know? And so I'm not worried about that. I just, I have to agree with many of my colleagues, with Senator Adams, Senator Duñez, that this is a, I see this as a very worthwhile investment. And I think he's just trying to get through the minutia of, you know, who's going to be able to do what. Obviously, there is the funding that exists. Am I correct, Mr. Guerrero and Mr. Carlson? If we could, there's a way we can work this out. Mr. Carlson?
Thank you, Senator. And for the record, I've known Ivan since forever. I played football. I'm a big supporter, particularly in youth athletics, youth sports, the promotion of a healthy lifestyle. I, on the governor as well, has health and the improvement of health and facilities that promote health and better health high on her agenda. So the way that this is written, I do have to commend this section on the BPT, because they got it right. It's on the unplugged portion. And I'm very happy with that, because we don't have to have that long, drawn-out discussion. We do have bond covenants that we have to recognize and be very respectful of. So I'm glad that the GITA people that were sitting here also understand the unplugged portion. The ability to fund from that fund source, Senator Blas, is thoroughly, absolutely available. I do have a question for the author. The excise tax? And then, but you correctly exclude Healthy Futures, which is nice, because Healthy Futures hasn't been tracking, so we're not adversely affecting Healthy Futures. Is the excise tax, did you mean use tax? Because in our general fund, we actually have a category for use tax, and that's about a $400,000 collection a month. It's about a four and a half billion dollar fund source. So the first year is 300, 500,000, and second year is 375,000, if I remember correctly. Can be absorbed, and you're not touching the Healthy Future Fund portion. But I know we try to collect excise taxes, if I'm not mistaken, and I talked to Mr. Guerrero, you know, at the port, right, on stuff that comes in. But I think we categorize that as use tax, and there's always this big push to try to collect more of that tax when goods hit the port. And I'm not really sure whether or not, like cigarettes, for example, right? Because, you know, Healthy Future Fund is cigarettes and tobacco. I, if the clerk and the folks legal are okay with the language as it is, understanding that that's what we're talking about, then I'm okay. The fact that the Healthy Future Funds are not touched, I'm okay. Operationally, I know Ivan will just get that big cooler beer and bring the people together and we'll hammer out agreements. But I do agree with the comments on tenure. We do need to have something in writing, and we are going to be making improvements. And we do need to make sure that the improvements and, you know, are respected, used properly. And if that's boiled down in black and white, if Mr. Shoroma can get like a standard template so that he uses the same approach to each mayor, I think that would be wonderful. And then GITA wouldn't have any problem about, you know, doing anything but receiving something that was agreed to by each of the mayors, along with Federation, so that they could submit their application for tax credits. I think the methodology, including the comments made on the floor, are very appropriate to actually getting to where I think we want to go, which is having improved facilities for youth. So to answer your question, sir, sorry I took the long way around, but I was at a funeral earlier, so kind of making up for lost time. The answer to both fund sources is yes.
There's a long yes, but thank you very much. You heard that, Ivan. I just wanted to make sure that was on record, okay? You know, and lastly, I think that, you know, with regard to the concern about, you know, making sure that, you know, there's relationships or there's discussions with not just the mayors, but with the different other entities that basically are, own the fields that the organization plays on. Youth football's been around for, Ivan, what, 50 years, 60 years on Guam already? And in the past 60 years, it always would relied on relationships with not just the mayors and the agencies, but with the community itself. So I think there's a longstanding tradition, there's longstanding agreement, there's longstanding understanding, if you will, that this occurs. And we don't play football all year long, although some kids would love to be able to do that. And these fields, you know, I've seen House Angels Field being used by other organizations outside of football, you know, with the agreement that, you know, it's, we all take care of it. And that's one of the things that I appreciate about not being a part of. I grew up in youth football. I coached youth football, you know? I used to coach against him, play against him, and, you know, and be coached by him. Third one, I got more pain than anything else, but I'm confident in that. I'm confident that they've got a long history of being able to do this, and so therefore I just want to be able to say that I support this bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Talahi.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank the panel for sharing their insights with us. And I completely understand the budget director, and I feel confident that this bill is going to pass, and I just want to acknowledge that I support 332, that's 36 LS. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, and the panel for being with us, and enjoy your Christmas holidays. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Talahi. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the panel. So, yeah, I just want to have questions regarding, this question's for GITA, in regarding the bill, the amended bill on Section 771302. And so the contribution includes cost of transportation from the point of origin to its destination. So this seems to be very specific, and I guess it was the, or at least, is this something new in your review of any tax credits?
Similar language in similar in the other tax credit programs.
So cost of transportation from the point of origin to its destination, that's been used before in other QC's?
Other tax credit programs.
Okay, but not in a particular law? Has it been ever mandated in law like that?
In the other tax credit laws.
So a question for Ivan. So what do you envision this would, how is this incorporated into the rehabilitation of soccer fields? You know, this part, do you have the bill in front of you by any chance? Yeah, so on page three, it says, "Cost of transportation from the point of origin to its destination." So how do you envision that's going to be implemented by businesses? Or do you have an idea how that's going to be used?
I'm not familiar with that. I just got this this morning. I was so amazed.
So this is the first time you've seen this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Maybe you can think about it a little bit more in the, just if you wanted to, or do you see this as being necessary?
Senator Perez, can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, Mr. Carlson.
You're talking about transportation from the point of origin? So if he's shipping in LED lights from California, I think, you know, the shipping cost is included?
That's what I was asking him, you know, what does he envision? How does he envision this being utilized?
Yeah, I think that's my understanding.
Okay, so maybe we can move on to another question. We can come back, and I can maybe check in with you later.
Can I come back?
The other thing that was changed was the procurement. So it stated in the introduced version, it was competitively procured, and then it was removed, so competitively was removed from the amended bill. And so my concern with that is that, you know, if we're giving tax credits, we want to make sure we maximize how the money's being used, so that we're getting the best value for what we're investing. And so would you have, I mean, how do you normally procure things? Are things done competitively? Do you go around and ask for quotes, the best pricing? How are things done when you procure?
This is going to be our first time doing something like this, Senator.
Okay, it's your first time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's my concern, is if it's not competitively done, then we might use up all the money on one project, right? So to ensure that the money's being, you know, maximized to its fullest extent, I think it's really important that it's competitively procured. So I guess, and maybe the question more so would be, you know, as, you know, the Guam, as, you know, your organization, do you normally seek quotes? Do you normally go out and look for the best deal, or do you just, you know, how do you normally procure things?
Yes, we do. We look for the cheapest, because we don't have money in the first place.
Okay.
So as far as maintaining our fields or paying referee or whatever, we always look for the best price.
Okay, so competitively procured is sufficient for your...
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, and the other thing is, so the dollar amounts that are listed in the bill, there's caps for each of the years. So for the first year, up to $1 million in tax credits, and then subsequent years, there's a cap on them as well, no more than half a million dollars. Do you foresee, I mean, it's very specific, and I'm just wondering, considering all the fields that you, that are listed in the bill, I think that's why it's so important to have a plan, you know, so we can see, you know, again, maximizing the investment, you know, the government investment into this. I mean, I'm sure this is not your first time rehabilitating fields, and so maybe you can speak to how things are normally done and what are the needs? You know, I know you talked earlier, you answered questions earlier from my colleague about what is going to be, how those money's going to be used. But I think it's, you know, it's also good to look at and see what the vision is for the organization in, you know, maintaining the fields, so that, you know, the community is served. Like you said, you know, we want to ensure that our youth have access to, you know, these football fields. And, you know, I know growing up myself, I've always wished to have access to these things, and, you know, it wasn't there at the time. We actually played on the roads. So, yeah, this is, you know, a big step forward, and I just wanted to see what your vision is, you know, as we're investing in these football fields.
Well, once again, most of these fields are under the purview of the mayors, so we have no say of allowing who can use it or who cannot. Just during our football season, we asked the mayors to, you know, give us that leeway for the, at least during the season, the four or five months that we're allowed to play or practice on it. And then she gives us a schedule, okay, on certain days you're allowed to use it, certain days you're not. So we just follow all those rules, because they ultimately determine when we can use the fields. So what, like I said, once we make improvements on these fields, and we're not, it's off-season, everybody's going to benefit from the improvements that we made.
Okay, so then, these are shared fields, so there's other things going on, like rugby? Is that correct? So it's not just specifically for football?
And soccer.
Okay. Yeah, and it's almost a good time, you know, it's timely that we're talking about this, you know, as the World Cup is coming to a close, so, you know, perhaps, you know, maybe planting that seed, you know, maybe Guam can one day host the World Cup, right? And maybe looking at, you know, the bigger picture, you know, as we diversify, looking forward to diversifying our economy, and, you know, of course, serving our community and, you know, giving them hopes and dreams of being part of that. So, you know, I think this is important, but I think, again, like, my colleagues just want to make sure that, you know, we're making, we're maximizing our investment into this. So, yeah, I just, I just want to go back to my first question. So cost of transportation from the point of origin to its destination, do you think that's necessary, considering, I mean, maybe this question's for GITA?
Thank you, that'll be your last question, Senator.
Oh, my last question already? Okay, for GITA, so, I mean, this is very specific... Okay, for Gita, so, I mean, this is very specific language, and I'm just thinking that it could have been already incorporated into the first part of A, which says, "The business, to the extent that such business contributes to the cost of design, labor, and materials." So, you know, I think, you know, when we're talking about materials, you know, it's already transportation from, is already incorporated into that. Is that necessary to put that in there, you think? Or has Gita always assumed that materials meant shipment?
There could be instances where the cost of goods is just the cost of goods and does not include shipment, whether from the origin to the, to the point of entry, say, the port of Guam, and then they could actually have additional transportation charges to the actual destination, which could be the individual field.
So you're more, sorry, you want to keep that language in there, because materials may not necessarily encompass shipping costs, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Thank you, Senator Perez. All right, thank you. Senator Brown?
I don't have any more questions, Madam Chair, but I think this issue of having some sort of formal agreement in place for the use of the field, so it protects the interests of the Federation in implementing this, again, I just want to reemphasize, I think there's a need for it. And then also, Gita, in administering the release of these funds, you know what the intended plan is. And I don't think it would be that difficult, you know, Mr. Shoroma, you had mentioned that you've been working with the mayors all this time anyway. And I think having something in writing that acknowledges the work that you're contributing, so that you do have some direct involvement in there and some say, because you don't want someone else to come and say, "Well, we're going to change it," or "We don't know who has jurisdiction." I think that needs to be put in place. You know, it's still under the mayor's office and mayor's jurisdiction, but if they're designating you not just to play on the fields, but now to contribute, as you have, because now we're using public money, just some formal agreement on how you're going to implement it, and which projects you're prioritizing, and what actual work is being done, so that Gita has something to look at, and publicly, if anyone makes a request, you know, it's there to know how the money's being used and how it's being prioritized. So I'm just reemphasizing that. I think you're hearing those comments from our other colleagues as well. It ultimately will protect the work and investment collectively that you're making. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for coming today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for my last colleague's question on cost of transportation, I think Gita was right on there, is that cost of goods is one thing, and cost of transportation is another. And I think keeping it in there is also important, because we want to make sure that the individual or the organizations or companies that are donating will be able to include that cost of transportation, because the cost of goods will be X amount of dollars, and the cost of freight nowadays is very expensive, and we want to be sure that if they're able to provide donations and get a tax credit on there, that they be able to realize the full amount that they did donate to the organization. Mr. Carlson, would maybe, is there any funding from perhaps ARP or infrastructure funding that would be able to help to go to the fields, especially the fields that are operated or used by multiple organizations that are under the mayor's offices, that could help so that they'd be, the organization doesn't have to look for something that, you know, they'd be able to get, the mayor's office would be able to get from the administration in those funds, ARP or infrastructure fund?
Thank you for that question, Senator Ada. I don't believe that it's outside the realm of possibility for Mr. Shoroma to talk to the Mayor's Council President, Angel Soblon, for partnership agreements. The American Rescue Plan has allocated money to the Mayor's Council. They ramped up some of their staffing for village beautification requirements. So I don't think that there would be much hesitation in being able to work out something with the mayors to also assist in some of the grass-cutting efforts.
So of the, on the ARP funds, how much was allocated to the Mayor's Council for, of ARP funds? I don't want to get it wrong this time, because they might, how much was allocated and expended from ARP to the Mayor's Council of Guam?
We provided you a very detailed report as required. The initial allocation was like $8.9 million, and if you pull up the report, you can see what it is that they've both encumbered and expended. So there's a good amount of money left. They have some plans that are taking a little bit of extra time to pull together. They fully intend to use the funds allocated to them, but, again, we're talking about personnel that work at the village level.
Right.
So, again, I don't think they would be un-receptive.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlson. Mr. Shoroma, I hope that we'll be able to get this piece of legislation passed, and, you know, like I said again, you know, to continue to improve the fields for our children. You've done this for many years, and we look for many more years to come, and, you know, hopefully one day that any field that our children play on, whether it be tennis courts, soccer fields, rugby fields, football fields, baseball fields, that they're playing on quality fields, so that, you know, first and foremost is their health and safety, and, you know, everything else is to ensure that we got the sports and the facilities available to offer our children for their future and the generations to come. But thank you for everything that you do, and for your family, everything that they've done. Thank you to the panel. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Ada, Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for Mr. Carlson. Earlier, we were discussing with Mr. Guerrero, his review of the bill and the impact it had on the general fund, which is like 1% per year. And then also, this bill was sunset in five years, if not extended. There was also discussion on the overall amount. I was wondering if, of what the impact with this, that this will have, and I'm wondering, would you have any opinion on the total amount of, that we're offering in this bill? Can you chime in on that, please? And how that would affect?
I was present when Mr. Guerrero answered the question. I think he answered it as accurately as possible. And when Senator Blas asked me relatively the same question, I was happy to provide a very positive response, so I think we're okay.
So we're okay with the amount as specified in this bill? Steve, we're okay?
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Duennias.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think most of our colleagues have kind of outlined most of the parameters. I think we're going to be okay here. I just wanted to kind of go back to context one more time. I know there's a lot of talk about plans, which is appropriate, having, you know, clear, delineated items. I just think that for context and for our public that's listening, that maybe their children aren't involved in the sport of football or other field sports, just so that we have context one more time. Ivan, every one of these fields is currently basically in some sort of disrepair, but has been for many years, if not decades, used for football and other field sports, correct?
That's correct.
So I would envision that most of your plans would be repair, upgrades, and renovations of existing structures, i.e., brand-new LED lights to replace current broken, storm-ridden lights on the poles that already exist.
That's correct. Also, the surface, field surface?
Surfacing of fields, and maybe maintenance of annual surfacing of fields due to the wear and tear.
Yes, and possibly turf in the near future.
Turf in the near future. So just so that we understand, I mean, you're not designing and building a, an elaborate structure. You're looking at basically the investments here that are far beyond what the organization is able to raise money for, to, that the Mayor's Council doesn't have the overall discretionary funding for on an annual basis, and the fields have fallen into disrepair over the years. So this is a great shot in the arm whereby you simply be upgrading and enhancing the current facilities that exist, and you're not doing design construction or anything else of anything new. You're doing improvements and maintenance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I just wanted to do that for the purpose of knowing that, you know, because, I mean, I can understand Gita's position, too, that they're not, they're not public works, you know, they're not, you know, the entity really that is, you know, going to, they don't want to be a showstopper either. I mean, they know that these organizations, for decades, have put their sweat equity, leverage, whatever resources they could, to get these fields to what they are right now. They're playable fields, with the exception of being in disrepair, and I don't know how many lunch plates, how many car washes, you know, how many, how much more blood you can get from the turnip. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, yes, it's always laudable, and I am going to be in support of plans going forward, but, like I said, I don't, I don't think we're building any elaborate structures here. I think we're doing basic maintenance and upgrades. But, you know, Ivan, I want to help you with this, because I will also just take the courtesy time to go to the Mayor's Council. I think MOUs are a good thing. I really do, and I don't think that the mayors will have a hard time with that at all. In fact, you know, I think it might enhance some structure in terms of, you know, the agreements, and it actually might put a lot more teeth into future opportunities and the like. So Ivan, I will reach out to you after this bill passes and the structure's put in place, and I'll also make a visit to Angel, who I work with from time to time, and others, and I'm sure the Mayor's Council will have no problem adopting those kind of agreements. And it will, it will go a long way to enhancing the commitments that's there. I tell you, just in my closing, I mean, we live in a political world. We are of a political nature in being elected. I doubt any mayor is ever going to try to recapture a field where these kids from the villages and all the different villages come and play, and, as discussed by many of our colleagues here, the health and the, just general enhancement of our culture and our community coming together. Like you said, Ivan, for months on end, and families look forward to the season when it starts, and they look forward when it's over, too, because he took them away. Like I said, I've done it for many years, too, so. But I want to work with you, Ivan, and let's be committed to that, because I think that's something that really will enhance your organization, maybe even going out for grants in the future and the like. Thank you, Senator Duennias.
Speaker Talahe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will yield my time for questioning to Senator Perez.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Thank you, Madam Chair. So there is something in the bill that it needs clarification. It's in section 771 308, "Approval of Contributions." And so in that section, if you look at the last paragraph, it says, "The entity which has jurisdiction over the field pursuant to section 771 301 of this article shall be responsible for submitting the plan pursuant to section 771 310." So, yeah, I guess maybe the sponsor of the bill can clarify that section. Senator Moylan.
Just for the clarification, you're referring to which page, please?
Page seven. It's section 771 308. It's line 16 and 17.
Okay, start, so starting on page, I'm sorry, page seven, just starting that paragraph, so I read.
Yeah, line 16 to 17.
"The Department of Parks and Recreation, in respect to mayor or nonprofit groups which has jurisdiction over the respective football field, should have regulatory and advisory oversight, to the extent appropriate, the rehabilitation improvements of the football field operated by GNYFF pursuant to this article with the scope of..."
Sorry, it's a different line you're reading. I think it's on page, if you look at page seven of the amended bill, unless I have the wrong copy.
Oh, sorry.
It's line 16 to 17.
Okay.
Sorry, if I can reinstate the time, because this is a clarification. It's not, I'm not asking questions. If you could put it back to 9:33.
Okay, okay, I'm looking at the, as submitted by the committee, as amended to committee of General Government Operations, okay. And page seven, once again, line 16, okay. "The entity which has jurisdiction over the field pursuant to 771 301 of this article shall be responsible for submitting the plan pursuant to subsection 771310 of this article, and this responsibility shall be extended to, but may not be limited to, obtaining price quotes pursuant to applicable procurement of the rules and regulations and the laws along with the program marketing." So your question, if we go back to...
Yeah, is it your, is it the intention to maintain that, retain that section, the 7731310?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, because that was taken out of the amended bill.
On page seven, line 16 through, that, starting at line 16, is the intent of the bill, is the intent to relieve this within the bill? Is that what you're asking? Sorry?
Sorry, the time seemed to have changed. I don't know what happened. Can you fix the time?
Um...
I guess we can clarify it later. Yeah, we'll talk later.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I guess this question is for OFB. So I introduced the bill with the streetlight, for the streetlight fund, and in my investigation, it was lapsing about half a million dollars consistently in our review. And so this potentially could be a source of funding for the lights and street poles. If you can, I mean, I'm just thinking that perhaps we can utilize what funds are available, rather than going directly to tax credits. Can you confirm the lapse of funds? So generally, what those funds do is it goes to DOA. It doesn't, it doesn't get, there's no continuing appropriation. That's why I introduced the bill, to update the streetlight fund. And, you know, I think it's important that that resource is available to, you know, to the community as a whole, including these fields. So if you can, maybe, do you have information on the money that was lapsed from, or not spent, from the streetlight fund?
You're referring to FY '22?
We could start there, but I know in the past five years, it hasn't been utilized to its fullest extent.
Okay, what I can do, Senators, I can follow up on that and find out exactly what the balance is as of September 30th and moving forward, to see whether or not any of those monies actually are still available, because normally those monies are used to pay the streetlight given to public works via DOA.
Yeah, there isn't, you know, what we found is that there was $500,000 consistently that hasn't been used.
Yeah, I can verify that, Senator, and get back.
But at this point, it gets absorbed into the DOA account, so whatever they use that for, I'm not sure, but, so you're not going, probably not going to find money left, but I appreciate if you can look into that.
I will look into it. Thanks.
And just, I guess, in general, for the public, you know, the mayors and DPW, this is something that we can coordinate on, and, which is the reason why I introduced the bill, is to give it more effectiveness, so that the streetlights, I mean, we are, a lot of streetlights are not fixed, and we found the reason, because it's different jurisdictions, and the current legislation or the current statute is not flexible enough to address these streetlight issues. Okay.
Okay, Senator, I will look into it and get back to you on this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. That completes our second round of questions. We will take a moment's recess to release the panel and move into the amendments portion and comments for the third round. We are in recess. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas to the panel.
The Committee of the Whole is back from recess. We are on Bill Number 332-36, as amended by the committee, and we are now on the third round in the Committee of the Whole to entertain amendments and comments. The First Amendment loaded to the Google Drive, colleagues, is B332JCML4 to 17P3. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The amendment is for line four through 17 on page, reference page three, specifically to subsection 771-301, is hereby amended. This refers to the acerbity of article and reference to Item C, which is Eagles Fields. The amendment basically just removes Item C. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, on the amendment, on the amendment, Speaker Trelawney, I recognize...
If the sponsor could just clarify why it's being removed. I heard Mr. Shiroma this morning say they really want to put up lights and something else there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, as we know, this area is considered for other usages, and at this time, Mr. Shiroma as well as the GNYFF is in agreement to further clarify this usage of that area. So at this time, they're willing to remove it from the bill. And in the future, if things change, they will relook at that. But at this time, they prefer to have it removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Trelawney. Thank you very much. On the amendment, are there any objections to the amendment? Hearing none, motion carries. We are now on the amendment, the Trelawney amendment to line eight, page eight. Speaker Trelawney, excuse me, Senator Titegwe, you are recognized.
No problem, Madam Chair. I know TT hits Teresa and Trelawney, tell the title, Titegwe. So, I appreciate you recognizing me on this amendment, Madam Chair. It's again on page eight, line eight. And what I'm doing is amending the bill to actually create a 771-310, and this is the submission of plan. I thought about, you know, just taking out from the original bill, the section that talks about submitting a plan from A to E, but I think the concern that GITA has with regards to approving any kind of plan, rather than it just be submitted to GITA, is their biggest concern. My biggest concern is just for them to provide a plan. So this amendment would do that, would have the GNYFF provide, submit a viable development plan for the field's purposes for the said development. So again, this amendment is on page eight, line eight, and it's 771-310, Submission of Plans. It reads, "The Guam Economic Development Authority shall not accept any quest for tax credits pursuant to this article until the GNYFF submits a viable development plan for the field's purpose for said development."
Thank you. On the amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none, amendment carries. The last amendment loaded to the Drive, colleagues, is to line four, page five. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this amendment reads, "Deconstruction professional services, equipment and materials shall be competitively procured." So basically reinstates what the introduced version has. And just to really ensure that, you know, we're investing our dollars, the public dollars in the most, you know, useful, I mean, frugal way, because if we don't competitively procure, then we stand the chance that we're not maximizing the use of the public funds. And there's so much need. As you can see, there are several fields that are in need of repair, so we just want to make sure that they all get some sort of, some care, so it can be utilized by the public.
On the amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none, amendment carries. That completes the amendments in our Drive. We'll now have time for comments and then closing from the author. Senator Titegwe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'm still a little bit weary. I was hoping that, I was hearing through the grapevine, that there might be amendment to also incorporate an understanding or an agreement or contract between the mayor's office and the football association to incorporate here, because any kind of improvements you're making on an area that they have no jurisdiction or even an agreement on to make those changes, it's pretty, well, it should be done, actually, because all that money that's being wasted, you know, I mean, used, it could be wasted when someone else comes in with another form of athletic, like baseball, you know, to change that filled up and created diamond and bases and just tear up the field for something else. So I just hope that moving forward, before the Guam Federation does anything, Football Association does anything, that they do work with the mayor's office and put in an agreement before anything moves forward. So that's my concern about the bill. So I thank you.
Thank you. Final comments on the bill. Senator Duennias.
You know, I can share that concern, and I want to make it and put it on the record clear here. Going forward, I have committed to Ivan and the league to use my resources and my staff to draft an MOU agreement, and I will be approaching the Mayor's Council of Guam, starting with the President, Angel Sablon, and all the respective mayors of the villages to where these fields exist. Obviously, in Angel's Field, Madam Chair, you know, they were successful, and I know that Attorney Mike Phillips and others really worked hard. In fact, it was very difficult. They had to really, you know, work diligently to get, you know, the government to realize and Chumol Antras to realize the investment that was going in. I know that the Calvo family and several others have really, you know, they had the Miller Football League at one point, which was the adult league, and there's so much money that's been spent by our private sector and our community to do these activities. But there's nothing wrong with putting things in writing, and it's been recognized. And you know, this even happened with rugby, the field behind it, you know, the rugby organizations, they went on good faith, but they ended up also being able to get agreements, you know, with the government. And, you know, in a time when we look at this, Madam Chair, and we see, unfortunately, even with our school system that gets millions of dollars every year, you know, we see fields and gyms and other things that can't even be used, you know, and you have an organization that, like I said, has really bled hours and hours of sweat equity, and families and everybody else just getting together and doing everything they can to make sure our kids can go out there and play. I'm sure it would be unconscionable in our community for others to just come in and capture something that's been invested in and been put together to work. But yes, it is important to put those kind of guardrails and safeguards in place. And many of us should continue to use our offices and our resources when we can help an organization that obviously is just trying to get our kids to play, but to draft agreements and the like. And I can't wait until we get scheduled to be on the mayor's council meeting, and we have that agreement and that resolution that I know that they will be forthcoming with, Madam Chair. So I wanted to make sure that that's on the record, so I'll be held accountable for that in the coming months in the new session. Suhu Masimane, Madam Chair. And I certainly, wholeheartedly, support this bill and the investment in our youth that we all purport that we really want to do. Suhu Masimane, Madam Chair.
Suhu Masimane, Senator Duennias. Final comments on the bill. Senator Moylan, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues, for the discussion. I do appreciate the panel answering many of our questions. I also want to, once again, thank my cosponsors, Senator Duennias, Senator Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Tony Adet. We're looking forward to this bill moving forward, of course, with the amendments as introduced and passed, and basically making something that has been going on for 50 years even better than it was before. So, VIBA GNYFF. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Suhu Masimane, Senator Moylan. A motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that Bill Number 332-36 LS, as amended by Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, as amended in Committee of the Whole, with the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole to be placed on third reading file. Madam Chair.
On the motion with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole... On the motion with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole to place Bill Number 332-36 LS on the third reading file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are now in recess. We are back from recess. Speaker Terlahey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill 357 and 35, that 357-36, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, and Bill Number 332-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed on the third reading file.
On the motion to place Bill Number 357-36 as amended and 332-36 as amended on the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are back from recess. Speaker Terlahey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after the deliberation on Bill Number 357-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, and on the Bill Number 332-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole to place on the third reading file.
Thank you very much, Speaker. We have exhausted the, on that motion, hearing no objections, are there any objections? Motion carries. We have exhausted the second reading file. Speaker Terlahey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move to go back to motions.
On the motion to go back to motion, are, motions, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Speaker, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi. I move to place Bill Number 1112-36, as substituted and further amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, onto the session agenda. It is an act to amend Chapter 10 of Division 1, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, to add a new Section 42A 101I-20 to Chapter 42A of Division 3, Title 7 Guam Code Annotated, to amend 42A 101J of Chapter 42A, Division 3, Title 7 Guam Code Annotated, relative to medical malpractice in the territory of Guam. The bill was listed in the potential items during the COR meeting on November 22nd and was on the public notice for session. The committee report was submitted to COR on December 7 and was cleared today. A copy of the report is uploaded to the legislature's website, and it also was available to the public on my website at senatorlahey.com since December 9. That's my motion, to place it on the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, colleagues. It's also in the motions folder in the drive, if you are looking for it. There has been a motion to place Bill Number 112-36 onto the session agenda, as substituted and further amended, or as substituted by the committee. Are there any objections? There's been an objection. All those in favor of placing Bill Number 112-36 on the session agenda, please signify by raising your hand. Motion fails. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of John C. Terlahey to serve as Judge, Superior Court of Guam, onto the session agenda.
Thank you. There's been a motion to place the nomination of John C. Terlahey to serve as Judge of the Superior Court of Guam. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are still in motions, colleagues. We are in motions. Speaker Terlahey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to recess until 3:00 PM today.
There has been a motion to recess until 3:00 PM today. Are there any objections? We are in recess.